I call this the August 18th, 2020 Lincoln County Commission to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Bruce McVeigh. Bruce is the Minister at the First Presbyterian Church here in Fayetteville. Our pledge allegiance tonight, we got a double pledge allegiance tonight. There is kinship here, so Ladue Painter is 10 years old. Ladue, raise your hand. 10 years old, he's in the fifth grade at Unity. Last year he was nominated for the Vandy Davis Award. And his brother, Bo Painter, nine-year-old, fourth grade at Ralph Askins. Both have been on the honor roll since they started school. They attend Riverside Church of Christ. They're the sons of Kirk and Tara Painter and grandchildren of Curtis and Tammy Painter. And Tammy is the newly-elected property assessor of Lincoln County. Congratulations, Tammy. Bruce, if you will not deliver our invocation followed by our pledge, please say aye.
I don't know about you all, but I often like to use the lyrics from some of our great sacred hymns in my prayers, except for all they're just words set to a tune. So you might hear some of that hymn in my prayer today. I promise I'm gonna try my best not to sing along with it, but if something slips out, I apologize, I can't sing that well. So let's turn to the Lord in prayer, if you will. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who has brought us thus far on the way. Thou who is by Thy mind, led us into the light, keep us forever in the path, we pray. Let our feet stray from the places, our God, where we meet Thee. Let our hearts drunk with the wine of the world, we forget Thee. Shadowed beneath Thy hand, may we forever stand true to our God, true to our native land. Oh, Lord, our great governor, part of keeping true to You, our God, is our living, as living so as to reflect Your glory into our community. Part of our keeping true to this, our native land, is serving others as You command it to do. So tonight, we ask you for your blessing on those who hold public office. We especially hold up the elected officials of Lincoln County and some of the here. We commend them to their personal care, grant them the wisdom and strength to be guided by Your divine providence, so that they may protect all who live here in Lincoln County, especially of those whom Christ called the least of these. Help them to remember that they are called to serve the people as lovers of truth and justice and to faithfully promote additional welfare of your people. We pray all these things in Your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Ladue, and thank you, Bo. I appreciate that. We are ready for the roll call. If you will answer roll call electronically. Thank you. No announcements tonight. The COVID updates, if you want to look on the Lincoln County TNGov.com, those are updated Tuesdays and Thursdays, and every morning about 8:40, we're updating on WYTM. And if anytime you've got questions, you're sure welcome to call our office. At this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the July 21st Commission meeting. Commissioner Bradford makes motion. Commissioner Young seconds. Any questions, comments, or corrections on those? All those in favor of approval, as they were printed, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. First item, election of the Chair of the Lincoln County Legislative Body. This print there, this will expire 2021. It's a one-year term. So at this time, I would turn the chair over to Chairman Pro Tem Doug Cunningham.
As you all are all aware, each year, we reelect the Chairman for the Lincoln County Commission. And at this time, I would open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Lincoln County Commission. Mr. Ogilvy nominates Bill Newman, seconded by Mr. Shirley. Entertain a motion to the nomination cease and he be elected by acclamation. Ricky Bryant moves. All in favor, send motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We have to go through a roll call vote by state law. So what you would need to do, if you are in favor of Mr. Newman being approved as the Chairman, you say Newman. If you are against Mr. Newman being in that position, you would just say no or nay. And I ask the Clerk to call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Gray, Sanders, Walker, Revvis, Thor, Ashley, Eun, Mitchell, Bradford.
Newman.
Pastor, Sprague, Britt, Dangerfield, Cunningham, Martinez, Young, Ryan, Douglas, Doug, Holland, Jean, Otle.
22 ayes. Mr. Newman has been named as the Chairman of Lincoln County Commission. Mr. Newman?
Good job, Doug.
Now we're ready for the election of the Chairman Pro Tem of the County Legislative Body. That term would also expire September 2021. The floor is now open for nominations of that position. Commissioner Jeans makes that motion, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Do I hear a motion that he be elected by acclamation? Commissioner Douglas makes that, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield. All those in favor of election of Commissioner Cunningham by acclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This time, we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gray, Sanders, Walker, Revvis, Thor, Ashley, Eun, Mitchell, Bradford.
Cunningham.
Pastor, Sprague, Britt, Dangerfield, Taylor, Cunningham, Martinez, Young, Ryan, Douglas, Doug, Holland, Jean, Otle.
Commissioner Cunningham.
You should have received 12 monthly committee meeting minutes in your packet. Next item, with a lot of pride, I would like to introduce Senator Shane Reeves that's with us, Representative Pat Marsh, and Representative Rick Tillis. If y'all will please stand. These three guys have done us a yeoman's duty in the legislature far as what Lincoln County has received and represented us, and we appreciate all you do. And tonight, they are present for a presentation of no findings from the Comptroller's Office, but we appreciate it. And at this time, I would like to introduce Jason Mumpheimer. Jason's the Deputy Comptroller of the Tennessee Comptroller's Office. He also served in the state, as a state representative from Sullivan and Johnson Counties. This, I don't know if is legal or not. He was elected at the age of 23 and served 14-year tenure there. He served as the House Majority Leader, the House Minority Leader. He was on some of the key committees, the House Health and Human Resource Committee, House Finance, Ways and Means, and he was also elected Legislature of the Year by several organizations. He's a graduate of King's, King College, with a BA in Economics and a minor in Political Science. And notably, in June of 2013, Jason graduated from Harvard University's John F. Kennedy School of Government, Senior Executives, and State and Local Government Program. Jason?
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. It is a pleasure to be back in Lincoln County. And it is certainly a pleasure to be here with Senator Shane Reeves, Representative Pat Marsh, Representative Rick Tillis, three men who do a great, great, great job as a mayor, representing the nation. It's a pleasure to be able to serve with them. I'm here tonight, as the mayor said, back here tonight, to recognize you in Lincoln County again for your fourth consecutive year of a clean audit. And I'll tell you, this is not something we do very often. And we want to commend you on the excellent job that you have done, you mayor, commissioners, your county officials, Cole Bradford, your finance director. Clean audits don't just happen. You don't just fall into one. You have to, above all, want to do things right. And once you want to do things right, you'd be surprised how many people miss that first that they just don't want to. Because if you want to, you have to work to. So here in Lincoln County, you want to do everything right, as far as keeping your books in order. And then, once you want to, you work to, because it's a lot of work, and you deserve to be commended for it. It is a great honor and a great pleasure to be here tonight, to commend you to offer your fourth consecutive clean audit. I have with me our Deputy Chief of Staff Jennifer Pfeiffer, and from our Legislative Operation, Lauren Webb and Hayden Menendez. They've been here before. And I was meeting with the mayor and Cole before we came in, and what I said is, we're glad to be back tonight, we'll be glad to come back next year, too. So if you keep wanting to, and you keep working to, then we will look forward to being back here, recognizing you again for a clean audit, and we hope so in Lincoln County next year. We'll step in the middle here, and I hope Senator Reeves, and Representative Tillis, and Marsh, and mayor, you can come down, and Cole, if you'll come up, and really anybody that wants to can come here. We're gonna make a, we're gonna make a picture. Mayor, your staff's department has to come on down, and we'll make a picture.
Next item is our school building update. Dr. Bill Heath, Director.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. I want to report to you on our building plans, an update on that to begin with, and then a little bit about the reopening of school, where we are after 12 school days. First of all, Blanche, just down at Blanche, the construction just continues to move on at a record pace, so we feel really good that, that we'll meet, for sure meet the deadline of opening school next year there. But, but again, we're looking at maybe December, January, February, somewhere in there of, hopefully, being able to give you guys a tour of that building and, and begin to prepare for opening school next year down at Blanche. At the high school, the wing is open, classes met there, first day of school. So, you know, I had to go off to Mr. Bryant and his staff and working with our construction folks, because if you recall, back in late fall, I reported to you, we were about six weeks behind last year. And so I did a fantastic job in speeding things up and getting completed and getting, getting open for our kids to be able to, to use those, those new, that new facility when school opens. So that was a very good thing to have. As far as the reopening of schools, of course, we've had 12 days of school now. We opened three Mondays ago, and it's been somewhat of a roller coaster ride. I want to report to you that some things that I've, I've seen, being at, at a school on the first day of school, seeing the kids when they got, drove by with their parents and then got out, and it had been 142 days since kids had walked in our school buildings for, for somewhat of a school, a regular school. And seeing their eyes and seeing how excited they were, and seeing, last night, I was at our first athletic event, volleyball game at the high school, and just watching the players interact with each other, like the varsity players during the JV game, how they were interacting with each other, and then the JV players interacting with each other during the varsity game, seeing the students and spectators at the game and how they were interacting with each other. It let, those things that I just described to you, let me know that we definitely made the right choice when we gave parents the option of in-school as traditional as possible as one of the three options that parents had. And about 75% of our parents chose that route for their kids. So we started school with about 3,000 students approximately coming to the traditional school in the building, and we've, I mentioned earlier, it's been somewhat of a roller coaster ride. We've had a couple of buildings in which a lot of folks have been quarantined. I don't know if you realize this or not, but last year, I reported this to Mayor Newman the other day, last year, we had 23,000 visits to school nurses in which kids had symptoms that we sent them home for a day or two, maybe a fever, maybe a runny nose, whatever. And they were able to come back in, you know, 24 or 48 hours. Today, if that happens, is two weeks. And so those, those things are causing a lot of quarantines of students and adults. Plus, anytime there's a positive case, whether that case was, no matter where that case was contracted, if it exposes our kids or our students, then they have to be quarantined. So, so out of the 3,000 or so kids that chose to be in school, right now, what we're experiencing is about, oh, 10 to 12% of those are quarantined for some reason. Either a positive test or being exposed to a positive test, or having a symptom that is now a symptom of COVID-19. So I tell you that to say it's not been easy, but we're three weeks in almost now, and it's getting easier. I've had superintendents from all over the state call and ask me, okay, you guys were one of the first ones to start. What have you experienced? What have you learned? And, and I've been glad to share those things with everyone. But, but, but again, I think the biggest message I want to give you tonight is, is there's no doubt in my mind, we did the right thing by giving our parents those options. And after what I've seen with the kids, and, you know, they need school. If this had happened my junior year, at the time it happened here, I would have never experienced a state tournament in basketball. My senior year in football, I wouldn't have known if we were gonna play a game or not, because that's the timing of this thing. And those are the memories I have, you know, the greatest memories I have from high school. I have a lot of other ones, but those are the greatest memories I have. And I don't want our kids to have a void in their memories of a year or two because COVID-19 kept them out of school. So we're gonna do everything we can to offer in-person schooling. Not everybody's gonna agree with the decisions we make, and I realize that, but we're gonna try to keep schools open, and we're gonna do everything we can. One of the things that we have decided to do between now and fall break is on Mondays, every Monday from now to fall break, we will not have in-person school. There are four Mondays between now and fall break that school was scheduled. The children will have an e-learning day on that day, and our teachers will report to work as normal, and they will be using that time to make those adjustments that they have found out they need to make in the way they deliver instruction, but haven't had an opportunity to make it yet, because we hit the ground full speed ahead. I mean, all of our kids who chose to be in school were there on day one. We didn't stagger the start, we didn't do anything like that. Nothing against any system who did that. That was just our choice. But, but, but we've got to give our teachers an opportunity to make the adjustments they need to make to best meet the needs of the students in school and the students that chose virtual. So there are four Mondays between now and fall break that, that we won't have school that school was regularly scheduled for. There's one holiday on a Monday between now and fall break, and then there's also a previously scheduled teacher workday that's been on the calendar for a long time. So, so that's the six Mondays. We notified the parents last Friday to give them 10 days' notice that, that we'll be doing this. So hopefully, hopefully, everyone's been able to find childcare or, or some, something for their child on those days in which we won't be in session. But I wanted to report all of that to you, and I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Dr. Heath? My compliments. Our school system's in good hands, and we appreciate your leadership and all those others that are falling in there behind you and serving, and it's, it's showing.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, but we've got a great team. Thank you.
Next six items are all reelections, reappointments. Any objection to taking those six as one group? I will read them, but if anyone has, wants one of them pulled out, or all of them separate, let me know, and we'll do that. No objections to it? Okay, I will read the first six and then ask for a motion. Number one, consideration for approval to reelect Ed Sims as parliamentarian. That term expires September 2024. Number two, consideration for approval to reelect Darren Holland, Roger Martinez, Danny Walker to the Beer Board. Term expires September 2022. Number three, consideration for approval to reelect Mark Mitchell to the Chamber of Commerce Board. That term expires September 2022. Number four, consideration for approval to reappoint Ben Brown, Kate Guin, Doug Cunningham, and Charles Hunter to the Delinquent Tax Sale Committee. That term, those terms would expire September of 2022. And this is the same committee, it's the Financial Management Committee, which is number five under this, and that would expire at the same time. Those both committees are the same people. Number six, consideration for approval to reelect Ricky Bryant, Glenn Douglas, Steve Sprague, and Stephanie Britt to the Fire EMA Committee. Those terms would expire September 2022. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. Any questions, discussions on the reappointment or the reelection of these committees and the reelection of Ed Sims as our parliamentarian? All those in favor of approval of those six items, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item will take separate. Consideration for approval to elect Mark Mitchell to the Fire EMA Committee. That term would expire September 2022. Commissioner Young declined another term on that. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Martinez makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor of approval of that, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. The next two, is there any objection to taking the next two as a group? They're reappointments. Seeing none, I will read the two, and then I will ask for a motion. Number one is consideration for approval to reappoint Ernie Morgan, Randall Slaton, and Brian Rutledge as judicial commissioners. Terms expire September 2021, and in your packet was a recommendation for this from Judge Meyer. Number two, consideration for approval to reappoint David Sanders, Randy Bradford, Shirley Dangerfield, Danny Walker, and Ron Mayhall to the Lincoln County Ethics Committee. Those terms would expire September of 2021. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Guin. Any discussions or questions on these items? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item is consideration for approval to appoint Cole Blocker to the Lincoln County Planning Commission. Commissioner Revvis has declined another term to serve on that, and that term would expire August of 2024. The floor would be open for additional nominees. Yeah, I think you received in your packet a biographical sketch of Cole Blocker. What's the will of the commission on filling that? Commissioner Ogilvy makes a motion for approval. I have a second. Commissioner Sprague seconds it. Any discussion or question? All those approving Cole Blocker to that appointment, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. The next, we've got five items there that are reelect or reappoint. Does anybody want those taken separately? Not, I'll read them and then ask for a motion. Number one, consideration for approval to reelect Tori Young, Ricky Bryant, Kate Guin, Ben Brown, and Randy Bradford to the Personnel Committee. Those terms would expire September 2021. Number two, consideration for approval to reelect Glenn Douglas, Charles Hunter, Darren Holland, Steve Sprague, and Steve Guntherberg to the Road Committee. Those terms would expire September 2022. Number three, consideration for approval to reelect Roger Martinez, Charles Hunter, Jack Ashley, Steve Sprague, Danny Walker to the Rules and Legislative Committee. Those terms would expire September 2022. Number four, consideration for approval to reelect Doug Cunningham, Ronald Jean, Jack Ashley, Steve Guntherberg, and Anthony Taylor to the Solid Waste Committee. Those terms would expire September 2022. And finally, number five, consideration for approval to reappoint Randy De Laup, Betty Creason, and Brenda Rolls to the Three Star Housing Committee. And those terms would expire September 2021. What's the will of the commission? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved.
I'm gonna start in the bathroom for about two, thirty minutes. Anybody have action on that for the audit?
Okay, I didn't ask for approval of the minutes?
No, the thirty minutes.
Oh, oh, okay. We need a motion on those for approval?
Just a minute.
Okay, alrighty. We're gonna go- We're going to go back to, on the first page, there's 12 monthly committee meeting minutes. We would like a motion for approval of those. Mr. Guin makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any question on those? All those approving receipt of those and the minutes themselves, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Is that okay? All right. I don't think we have anybody here from IDB, do we? Michael Dempsey did let us know that he didn't think he would be able to attend, so we'll get that at our next meeting. Commissioner Ogle, I guess we're ready for the budget to report.
They corrected me about the same tapes.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradford seconds it. Any discussion on this item? At this time, if you will electronically vote, please. Motion passes. Item two, Commissioner Ogle. Commissioner Sanders makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bradford seconds. Any discussion or questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle? Commissioner Ogle makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of approval of item C, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle? Commissioner Holland makes a motion for approval, seconded by Commissioner Britt. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of item E, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogle? Thank you, Commissioner Ogle. Next item, no republics. Madam Clerk? Now, did I hear a motion approval of that list? Commissioner Guntherberg makes a motion. Commissioner Thorpe seconds. Any questions or comments on that list? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Did I hear? Okay. All right. I'm going to say it was unanimously approved. The floor is now for new business. Commissioner Ogle makes a motion that we adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Hunter. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. That's up to the commission. We really have gone past that. Is it all right with the rest of the commission? All those in favor of not adjourning, this is just, say aye. Any opposed to not adjourning? Okay. Commissioner Dangerfield, I recognize you.
I didn't rush into this to do it. What I'm saying, because I'm trying to give you time, but I am younger, going to get into fights. But I want to say this to the United States of Tennessee, who has spent, can you hear me?
You can, you can remove, you can remove your mask if you would like while you're speaking. It's fine.
You can't hear me.
I think it'd be better if you did remove.
Okay, then, I can do that. I just don't know why I have to say what she's talking about. Mr. Hill is a native of Tennessee who has spent his life standing up to the bullies and fighting for the forgotten.
Wait, wait. I, I, I stopped. This is a, this is somebody running for political office, is it not?
I don't know.
Well, I think it, is it not? We can't do that. No. Well, I'm the, I'm the chairman of this. We're not, we're not going to have political speeches, you know, in our. They can have their own joining, but unless I'm. Okay. And I have a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed to adjournment? We are adjourned.